Okay. I'd like to call the regular city council needing to order. Joanna, would you call the roll please?
Mayor Downing?
Here.
Mayor Protem, Carol Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Snatzinger?
Here.
Councilmember Malacab?
Here.
Councilmember Wayne Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Carrico?
Here.
Councilmember Whitman?
Here.
Councilmember Winnicky?
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand and join me, Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or additions from council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. And the first thing we have is an interview. Isabella? Isabella? Mona? Mona? How do you say your last name? Kunis? Kunis?
It's both Kunis.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming this evening.
I have a resume here that you guys won't have.
No, just we'll ask you questions, okay?
Okay.
All right. But you can read it too if you want to. Whatever you want to do.
I'll answer questions.
Well, thank you for coming. I know you're interested in the Youth Commission?
Yes.
So, why don't you tell me a little bit or tell all of us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Youth Commission?
I'm interested in the Youth Commission because I'm very passionate about youth leadership, especially in the community and places around us here. I am a participant in many other different types of youth leadership things, especially relating to history and youth advocating for history. So, I'm just really into being involved in my community and speaking up for what I feel is right.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Isabelle?
I just thought you had a very impressive resume on all the things that you're involved in. I was glad to see that. Obviously, you're well spoken as well. So, do you think you can make it to the majority of the meetings?
Oh, yeah. I definitely can.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
So, I just wanted to share that when Isabelle was interviewed by the rest of the Youth Commission, she just came across really well, just very well spoken, and she's involved in a lot of great things and that they voted unanimously to add her to the Youth Commission. So, I think that's great. But one of the things I liked that you did was I liked both your volunteer work at North Suburban and the Preserve America Youth Summit. Could you just talk about those a little bit for us?
So, I volunteer at North Suburban Medical Center, which is in Thornton, about two days a week for about four hours every day, every of those two days. I do a lot with assisting visitors in getting to their final destinations and making sure they're comfortable where they're at and making sure they have everything they need. And then, the Preserve America Youth Summit is a history advocacy group for teens in Colorado and it's reaching out to other states. And we mostly advocate for history and it helps the people who are wondering, like, is this important? Because it's youth speaking out for keeping the history preserved.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, how long have you been in the Future Business Leaders of America?
I've been in the Future Business Leaders of America since last year, at the beginning of last year. I'm also participating in it this year. I am a officer member. I'm the treasurer slash and social media person.
What are you competing in, in FBLA? What competition are you doing?
I'm not completely sure yet. I still have a little bit of time to decide. But last year, I did do business math because I'm really interested and good at math.
Good for you.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, since you're joining the Commission, do you have any ideas about something you would like to have them do or make some changes? Do you have anything that you want to share with us?
One of the big things that came up at the last meeting I went to was social media. And I feel that we can reach out to youth in a variety of ways besides social media, but we can also use social media. But I just really want to be able to reach out to the youth and my peers in my neighborhood and around the North Glen community.
Great. All right. Well, thank you very much for coming this evening.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have some proclamations. Three of them. So, I'll put down here right now. First one, we have Fire Chief David Anderson here. Would you mind coming up, please? Mona. Oh, wait. Okay. Except you shouldn't stand next to me.
No. Thank you, Julie. Thank you so much for coming this evening.
In this proclamation, this is concerning fallen firefighters Memorial Day. Whereas firefighters and emergency personnel play an essential role in the protection of lives and property in the City of North Glen and communities across the country. And whereas in 2014, 84 firefighters lost their lives in the performance of duty. And whereas the fallen firefighters will be honored at a memorial service at the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial in Evansburg, Maryland. And whereas the City of North Glen desires to join the North Metro Fire Rescue District to honor those firefighters who lost their lives in the line of duty in 2014. Now therefore, I rejoice down, Mayor of the City of North Glen, Colorado. hereby proclaim Sunday, October 4th, 2015, as Fallen Firefighters Memorial Day in the City of North Glen and call upon all citizens to observe the day in honor of fire and emergency personnel who have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their communities dated at North Glen, Colorado, this 28th day of September, 2015. Go. Thank you. Do you want to say anything about that or just?
We're absolutely appreciative of the proclamation. It's an honor to accept them.
Thank you. Thank you. We be grateful. So, we have one more that Chief Anderson's going to accept, and this is concerning National Fire Prevention Week. Whereas Fire Prevention Week was established as the result of the Great Chicago Fire on October 9th, 1871. And whereas the loss of lives and property caused by fire continues throughout the United States. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. And whereas the 2015 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Hear the Beep, Where to Sleep," every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm. Effectively serves to remind us that smoke alarms are required in every bedroom outside each sleeping area and on every level of a home to increase safety and provide time to get out if a fire occurs. And whereas the City of North Glen wishes to support and participate in National Fire Prevention Week activities. Now therefore, I rejoice down, Mayor of the City of North Glen, Colorado, to hereby proclaim the week of October 4th through the 10th as 2015 as National Fire Prevention Week. And urge all residents of the City of North Glen to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety message of Fire Prevention Week and to practice fire prevention activities at home, work, and school dated at North Glen, Colorado, this 28th day of September, 2015. And thank you so much.
We have the public invitation to speak. Well, I'll go ahead and tell you about some activities where I'm going to do.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay. So, next we have Customer Service Week, and I believe we have Kate and Kate Fisher and Karen Marquez here. Are you coming up? And before I give you this proclamation, I was giving this that I was reading, now I have no idea what's on it. So, again, that's true. I just received it, so we'll see what they say about you. Kate Fisher and Karen Marquez spent hours and days listening and engaging in our seniors' concerns, health issues, family updates, stories of grandchildren and great grandchildren being born, stories about World War II and the Korean Wars, state and national news and challenges. They provided a forum to learn about the Internet, social media, Medicare, living healthy, safety, living with humane eyesight, and an invaluable place to go after losing a spouse. Every day, they entertain seniors through counseling, plungence, book clubs, holiday celebrations, potlucks, performances, and winters. Okay. And birthday parties. However, they are more than event planners. They have become invaluable resources and friends for a senior population. They provide resources for mobility, estate planning, physical exercise, and safety. They make sure seniors are lifted up when they are down, that they participate regardless of their struggles. Their customers, heroes beyond being a listening ear and resource center, they are a shoulder to lean on and a source of laughter, joy, and so much more. So, thank you so much, Kate. I do have a proclamation I'd like to read. And this is concerning Customer Service Week. And both of you just show so much what Customer Service is all about. Whereas in 1992, the United States Congress declared that National Customer Service Week be recognized as an annual event and celebrated during the first full week in October. And whereas National Customer Service Week is set aside to recognize the importance of service excellence and honor those who demonstrate outstanding customer service and who consistently perform their duties with the highest level of professionalism. And whereas the City of North Glen is committed to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service, and it is important that high-quality customer service be a goal of our every person in the organization. And whereas the City Council desires to express its sincere thanks and appreciation for the excellent service provided by employees of the City of North Glen and wishes to acknowledge the quality of service provided by employees externally to residents in the pub and internally to their fellow coworkers. And whereas by recognizing National Customer Service Week, we can provide an opportunity to generate an even stronger commitment to customer service excellence through motivation and teamwork to continue throughout the year. Now therefore, I rejoice down, Mayor of the City of North Glen, Colorado, to hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through the 9th, 2015 as Customer Service Week in the City of North Glen. And I hereby honor the staff of the City of North Glen and their commitment to service and encourage our staff to continue their efforts to provide quality assistance and support to all of those who seek our services dated at North Glen, Colorado, this 28th day of September, 2015. Congratulations.
No, you're not sure.
Right? It's great to work with seniors and all the employees of everywhere in the city. We have a lot of great stuff coming in October. Here's where I plug.
Okay.
We have Pi Day. Wayne is going to judge pies for us.
I never miss it.
Have you been to the situps? Eat salads?
No. I haven't eaten pie for practice.
October 2nd is Pi Day, and then we have an Oktoberfest potluck. And Marcy is going to teach people how to Skype.
Oh, okay.
So, fun stuff. And hopefully he comes and sees us.
Karen, what is it?
Just thinking.
Thank you both for all you do. We really appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Public Invited Rehearsed. Five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council for up to five minutes?
Hello again. I want to reiterate that we're appreciative of the proclamation and we're constantly seeking opportunities to solidify our partnership with the city, with the community, law enforcement agencies. But I'm going to tell you real quick some of the things that we have going on in the City of North Glen within the next couple of weeks or month. Tomorrow, at our station two, which is on here on, there's a mammography van that's coming from St. Joseph's Hospital, and that offers residents a free screening from 8:30 to 3:30. It does take walk-up appointments. It takes about 20 minutes. So, that's another thing that we have set up for quite a few years now, and we want to continue that relationship. As you heard with the proclamation, October 3 through 10 is Fire Prevention Week. But some of what we're doing is at the Neighborhood Walmart on Washington from 10 to 2 on the 10th, we're having a safety fair. And at that, we're going to have a live burn demonstration again. And I don't remember if you know from last time we did it, but what they do is they put a couple of houses side by side, or not houses, rooms, and they get set on fire, and one is protected by sprinklers and the other one is not. And so, the demonstration shows how fast that that room that is not protected takes off and therefore then how the sprinklers are something that is truly a thing that we're pushing within residential buildings as well as commercial facilities for the safety of occupants. And that is again on the 10th at the Walmart. And then, we're also being part of the behind-the-scenes tour of the City of North Glen. It's going to be provided to students of Westview Elementary. We're participating there. We're participating with greeting students of Stuckey Elementary. On October 7th, we're going to, firefighters are going to walk and bike with them to school on that day. And we'll also be participating once again in the Safe Streets Halloween event that's coordinated by North Glen Police. So, just a little reiteration of our partnership and how we're committed to the community. And thank you again for the proclamations.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming this evening.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Move to a period.
Second.
Let's open the vote.
About a second.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Next, we have Ordinance's First Reading. Joanna?
This is for CV 1857, a bill for a special ordinance amending the 2015 budget recognizing revenues and appropriating expenditures by supplemental appropriation for the payment of the costs and expenses of the municipal government, agencies, and offices of the City of North Glen, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2015.
Move to approve. Second. David?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This supplemental appropriation, if approved, will be used to hire a consultant to conduct either or Phase 1 or Phase 2 environmental assessments at potential brownfield sites throughout the city. Theme would be basically to identify, to assess, and to develop early framework to come up with a remediation plan.
Okay. Discussion?
I just want to say I'm thrilled that we got such a wonderful grant and all the great work that was done to make that happen. So, very exciting. Well, thank you.
Is that usable citywide or is that just urban new only or?
Citywide.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CV 1857 on First Reading passes unanimously. And I would like to note for the record that the public hearing on CV 1857 will be held on October 12, 2015 here in City Hall Council Chambers.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolutions, and the first one is CR 115.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to issue a purchase order to the Regional Transportation District in an amount not to exceed $354,283 for the relocation of city utilities in RTD Right of Way.
Move to approve. Second. David?
Mayor and Council, this is regarding to the Fast Trax line going up through the city. RT, of course, if you know, inherited the line essentially from Union Pacific Railroad. 1996, the city signed an agreement that basically stated that if municipal utilities needed to be moved, regardless of the situation, the municipality would have to pay for those. RTD, to date, has identified four locations. There are two water lines and two sewer lines that need to be actually protected or extended. The protection extended so that their rail line would be able to be installed in what they believe is a safe manner. The total of those costs, those four quarters, as Joanna said, $354,000 or some change.
And they won't consider paying any or all of that?
They won't consider paying.
Or any in-kind, you know, credit or?
Yeah. This is not, this is not a, because of that earlier agreement that they inherited from Union Pacific Railroad, we cannot use any of these efforts by RTD to basically protect our lines to ensure safety on their line as an in-kind match.
Okay. That's too bad. Any other discussion?
That was my question. I was hoping we could get some kind of a, you know, be able to leverage it somehow. You know what I mean as a credit or?
I would like to remind council that ROK is working diligently with RTD now to, you know, on efforts, for instance, 112, to try to find an in-kind match so we can get credit for some of the work we've done around the station. I agree.
All right. Any other questions?
Is it possible, if they find some type of other problem, once they start moving these lines, that you would need a contingency on this or not?
I believe this is a one-time charge. I wouldn't want to state that as a final here, but we did talk about the price moving, and they've done enough work on this, they believe that they have the cost and the cost associated with each of these efforts. So, I'm just, I'm going to take them at their word at this right now. And my understanding is they won't charge any extra cost. This is the cost.
I can hold you to that when you bring it back to me.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay. Please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 115 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 116.
A resolution approving the 2015 amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement concerning the implementation of an E-911 Emergency Telephone Service.
Move to approve.
Second.
David?
Councilmembers, this is a resolution to give permission from Adams County 911 Emergency Telephone Service Authority to have the ability to raise their rates per line per month from 70 cents to $1.75 per line. Judging by the strategic plan and the coordination or looking at other service emergencies, this is at the top of the range of what other municipalities do. They haven't raised their rates in a long time. Their strategic plan identifies understaffing, modernizing their equipment, and slow response times is a need to improve their service. If we do give them this approval, that doesn't mean they can automatically raise their rates to any number. They have to go to the Public Utility Commission, similar as Comcast or XL or anyone, to raise their rates. They have a five-year strategic plan, so I assume that they're going to go to PUC once this is approved early next year and ask for some rate increase, and they have to justify that to the PUC.
And they have to go to the PUC this time too, don't they? Or no?
This is only setting up the framework between the users of this service that they can go up within that range. Once they, once they get that, then they'll have the ability to go above 70%, but they have to justify that rate increase to the PUC. It's open, it's public forum, and everybody would have a chance to comment on what their reasons are for raising the price. So, it's not, it's not an open price tag to just say a buck fifty or all the way to $1.75 per line per month. They have to justify each time they want a rate increase to the Public Utilities Commission.
And I understand that they haven't asked for a raise in a long time. And this is something we really do need, but it just seems like doubling, more than doubling it at one time is, you know, a little hard to take, I think, for people.
Yeah. The range is a 250% increase. And like I said, the director here has written some information, which we put into the body of the council memo here that basically justifies what they're asking for. You know, if council doesn't feel comfortable, I mean, I hope we approve this tonight. That's our recommendation. We could certainly get the director to come here and talk to council in the study session if that would make everybody feel better.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
I just wanted to say that the North Metro Fire Rescue District did talk a lot about this and the need and the fact that it's really been, it's really been a strong need to enhance this for a long time. So, they were talking about it at their last meeting as well and I believe did approve it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 116 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 117.
A resolution accepting grant awards from the United States Environmental Protection Agency for the City of North Glen Brownfield's Assessment Project.
Move to approve. Second. David?
Mayor and Council, this coincides with the first public, first reading, public hearing that we had a few minutes ago. I do want to point out there was a correction made in one of these spreadsheets, so if you have your packet with you, I'm not sure if Attachment C was actually, or Attachment B was. Yes, it is. It's labeled here, and Attachment B is the Assessment Worth Plan. So, if you have that, I will call out the changes for the public here, and Joanna has those changes as well. So, if you're at that page, I'm looking at the budget table that they have, and there's two components to that budget table. There's a hazardous component and a petroleum component. So, if you have that table, I'd like to talk about the petroleum component for a minute. The first line that needs to be changed under petroleum is on the contractual line. The first change is under Task 2. It says $112,000. That should be $114,000. The second change, also on that line contractual, is Task 5. It says $10,000 in your handout. It should say $18,000.
David, are these typos or why is the change happening here?
It was an inadvertent table that got put into your, into your package, and the correct table, I noticed the summations didn't add up to $200,000. So, this is the reason for the correction.
Thank you.
The last line is the total row, and the Task 1 reads 41,000. That should read $34,000. Task 2, that same last total row, reads 112,000. Should read $114,000. Task 3, same row, total row, reads $18,000. That should read $21,000. And that row, hopefully, totals to $200,000. So, those are the changes in the table, and we have the corrected version to Joanna as well.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion?
What is our local $15,000 contribution?
Excuse me?
It says local contribution of $15,000. What is that?
EPA generally requires a local match of a sort, so they're essentially contributing $400,000, $200,000 to each of these programs, of which the city has to come up with $7,500 for each of those programs. So, we would be getting $400,000. We have to put in $15,000.
Right. Have we identified that? Does the EPA need us to have that identified?
That'll be part of the, as part of the program. Yeah, we'll be, we'll be working with that. Once we, if council approves, obviously, the first reading we have, if we get the final approval, we'll have our consultants build our program and we'll work our $15,000 into the program. It'll, both sides will be clearly identified, both fun contributions.
Discussion? Any other discussion? Carol?
So, in the background section, there's a sentence that reads, "The focus area of the grants will be on the West 104th Avenue areas and the southwest commercial portions of the city, but is not exclusively limited to that area." So, my question is, well, Wayne just asked, when we talked about it before, is it open to all the city? You said yes. So, reading that is, I'm wondering why that area was chosen and what, can you pinpoint the location?
The EPA basically informed staff that they needed to have one specific location for the, basically the setup for the IG and the RFP, but the funds were clearly identified to be used throughout the city.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote. Hearing none, please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 117 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 118.
A resolution approving the First Amendment to the Legal Services Agreement between the City of Northland and Fisher Brown Bartlett and Gann, PC.
Move to approve. Second. David?
Mayor, Council members, you've heard me talk about our change cases for quite a while now. FBVG and our Water Rights attorneys have been spending a lot of time in court preparing our documentation in preparation for those change cases, hence that's the need for extra funding for this particular line item of $50,000, for a total of $150,000 for 2015.
Discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote. Yes?
So I'm just curious, so this is, cost today is through August 31st, so that gives us just a portion of the, what else are they going to be doing the remainder of the year to warrant an additional $50,000?
They're working with our water engineers to provide, get guidance on math to support our change cases, they're filing all kinds of motions in court, I don't know exactly, but we get monthly billing statements that show, I can certainly provide that for Council. This is just an estimate, it's very much like our emergency contractor, you know, if the funds aren't invoiced or billed, we don't pay them, so it's just an estimate at this time of $50,000, based on the rate of expenditure.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
So it could be more than that, I mean, you don't know, right?
It could be, hopefully it's less, but it could be more, that's exactly right.
Okay, yeah. I mean, you just kind of hope that they, it's not just an amount we're throwing out there, and then they just use the money because they know it's there, that's-
And staff didn't develop this number out of the blue, we worked with Bill Fisher and tried to figure out what his work effort would be for the rest of the year, and came up with a $50,000 number.
Any other discussion? Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 118 passes unanimously.
Okay, next is CR 119.
A resolution approving change order number two to the agreement between the City of Northland and American West Construction LLC for emergency pipeline repairs.
Move to approve.
Second. David?
Mayor, Council, I hope this is the last of the saga of repairing the terminal reservoir intake line, but that was a very difficult job to complete. This is the, basically the residual from trucking out huge quantities of saturated material from the leak and bringing in fresh materials. At this particular point, we believe this is the last, last portion that our emergency contractor will need. Right now, we're asking for $27,234, approximately, and some change, to complete the contract and the work that's been completed, and $30,000 for contingencies to cover us over, hopefully for the rest of the year, that we don't have any major, major repairs that come up on an emergency basis, for a total ask of $57,233.98.
Thank you. Discussion? Joe, you look like you wanted to say something, just there.
You don't want to hear what I want to say.
All right, well let's move on with discussion.
I'm just curious on why we have a September 16th change order for this amount, and we haven't approved it yet.
The work was completed, but it was a subcontractor, trucking company that was working for our emergency contractor, and those invoices didn't come in until a month or so after we went to Council for the first change order.
Right, but this work order says additional work, water treatment plant, and future work for 2015.
Right, the future work, the 30, that's the $30,000, it has nothing to do with the repair of terminal reservoir, we're asking for $30,000 to be appropriated to the operating account to cover us, so we don't have to come to Council, because there's no, there'll be no money appropriation there.
Correct. That's why I'm asking why this change order was done September 16th, when it hadn't been approved yet by Council.
Because we didn't know the work was complete, we didn't know the amount of the work that was going to be required, the trucking company's invoice came out after the last time, it was already completed, the contractor had done the work. And if you're asking-
So the $27,000 is the in the rears payment?
That's right.
And the $30,000 is to cover any future?
Right. That's correct.
Did you get your answer, Kim?
No, but we're just going to go in circles, so that's fine.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, Carol?
So, just kind of to go back to the lawyer thing, so I don't deal with these contracts all the time and these people, but I know that if I had an additional work order that just was for this $57,000 amount, and you didn't show the Council what they were doing, and I know, we don't want to get bogged down in minutia either, but it's like putting this open-ended amount again on something, now we're adding an additional $30,000 for additional work, and I don't know, it's just a trust thing, I know you guys have a handle on it, but it just doesn't look, doesn't feel good to me when I do these.
Okay, yeah, maybe I can make Council feel comfortable, we originally appropriated $60,000, we have no idea what that's going to cover, it could be a sewer break, it could be McDonald's Taco Bells, it could be anything, $60,000 is really a very small amount of money for any kind of break, that can easily be chewed up in one break, as you see here. I think where Kim's going is, yeah, they did the work without approval, because they exceeded their contract value, that's absolutely correct, so you don't, you don't have to approve this if you don't want to. The $30,000 is, if you do approve this, the $27,000 would cover the work in rears, as Joe pointed out, and the $30,000 is for potentially other work. I don't view it as an open-ended checkbook for the contractors, since they don't know if there's going to be any other emergency situations, we have to notify them and employ them to address an emergency situation, it's not like they're going to do work for the city and then just have this open checkbook, they have rates, hourly rates for their labor and their equipment, and costs for the materials, which they have to provide to us after every emergency call, so our engineers go over every single work order, they validate, they're on the sites, and they double check versus what they've done, so we, so essentially, we've agreed to the rate table, and we've agreed to the work that they've done, that's sort of the basis of the emergency contract, so it's not an open-ended checkbook.
And I trust that you go through the contracts, because I couldn't do that anyway, but just being a Council member and always just having to okay overages, we don't really, you don't come to us with underpayments or rebates, so it's always overages, so I don't, just-
When you think of the $20 million CIP we got, the amount of overages we've come to Council have been very small.
Okay. Thank you.
And not to put you on the spot, but I just wondered, for next year, do we have a bigger budget than the $60,000 for-
Jason has very nicely put our five-year average appropriations, and that's all I use, it's the best number I can use, I can't second guess what's going to break next year.
Well, I know, I know, I just wondered if maybe we should be looking at a bigger number, you know?
I use the five-year average.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's just important, too, that this is an emergency fund, and so, like you said, you can't predict what the future is going to happen, and so, the work was going to have to be done one way or the other, and they were going to have to get paid one way or the other, and so, this $27,000, even though it was paid before it came to Council, they were going to need to be paid for the work they did, because it was an emergency.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote.
A close-up vote, and CR 119 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 120.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of Northland and Strategic Government Resources to conduct an executive search process for the recruitment and selection of a city manager.
Move to approve.
Second.
David?
Mayor, Council, this is a result of a shortlist interview process where City Council deemed Strategic Government Resources as the most responsible poser, and again, this is to award the city manager recruitment to Strategic Government Resources.
Discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 120 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is an action item, City of Northland versus Board of County Commissioners of Adams County. Corey, please.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, I've communicated with you a couple of times via email about this action item, and so, as you know, the trial court issued an order in support of Adams County and against Northland, Aurora, and Commerce City last week, and so certainly, if you, if you wish, you could authorize the filing of a notice of appeal, if you'd like to discuss an executive session, there is an executive session scheduled if you feel you need additional information beyond what's been provided thus far, but if you don't need the additional information, certainly, it's our recommendation, if there has not been a change in the city's policy regarding how to proceed with the Adams County Marijuana Tax to authorize the filing of a notice of appeal, I think I let you know today that one of the other parties has already done so, and so I'm still waiting to hear from Commerce City.
Thank you. Discussion?
I'm fully appealing.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion?
Not yet.
I move.
I hear a second? Second. Okay. Any other discussion?
So what's the endgame? You take them to court, and you win, what do you win?
Adams County doesn't have the authority to impose the sales tax on marijuana unless the legislature changes the law.
Yeah, and I get, and I expected that answer, but-
That has, that's the answer.
And that, but that's, what money comes back to the city out of that? It makes our businesses maybe more competitive, but aside from that, because a business like myself, I have a business, and I pay the Northland tax, now down the street, there's a St. Tempe Sign Company in Adams County, they have a lower tax, I compete with them regardless, so what's the benefit to the city?
That's your call as a matter of policy, previously, what this Council has said is that it put the city, the businesses in the city at a competitive disadvantage with the ones in unincorporated Adams County, especially taking into account that the ones in the county don't have the authority to tax.
I think what, you know, I think it's been talked a lot about, too, is the precedence that sets, you know, of, you know, if it's marijuana, what's next, that they can put in individual taxes. And I get all that, I mean, I'm just, I mean, this, I thought this was a slam dunk this last time, so what is this next time for this appeal, what do you think?
I absolutely think that we are correct as a matter of law, I like our chances.
Enough you do it for free?
If you want to talk about a discount, I'd do it at a discount, because I'm a true believer on this, yes.
Senior discount, he's saying-
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too.
And the state did not give the county the statutory right to go in and collect the special sales tax, so the county went to the legislature and tried to get that authority. That they tried to do that shows that they were trying to get it in writing, that they could do it, so it wasn't in plain writing in the statute that they could collect. I think we do have good standing, I mean, the way I read it, I read it the same way Corey does, and I really believe that they're trying to get a tax that really doesn't belong to them, and it's just adding to their coffers, and that's what disturbs me the most.
And what, I guess I would add, why would the county feel the need to go to the legislature for the authority if they thought they already had it?
Exactly.
Was there any talk about a conflict of interest being that this was us versus the county, and that this was heard in Adams County?
No, this, as a matter of venue, this was the right place, but certainly, the appeal is to the Court of Appeals, which is three justices in Denver.
And if we win the appeals process down at the, at the state level, do they, can they take it to the Supreme Court potentially, then?
They could, but the Supreme Court review is what's known as discretionary, in other words, whoever loses at the next level can take it to the Supreme Court, but the Supreme Court gets to choose whether or not to hear it.
Okay. For us, it could mean a decrease in our revenue, because if our businesses are at a competitive disadvantage, and consumers decide to go outside the city, then they're spending less of their money at our businesses, so that is where we could lose some revenue in our city. We don't know if that's going to happen, it seems likely, in my view, but we don't know if that could, that is another possible outcome.
Does the appeal jeopardize any of Northland's taxing authority at all?
No.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, so the motion is, to be clear-
To authorize the filing of a notice of appeal.
Okay. And would you have a second? So, please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'm still thinking, I'm sorry. I'm just tired of going to court all the time. Yeah, yeah. I'm just over the appeals and the, I mean, it's just endless, you know?
I'll close that vote, and the motion to authorize the filing of a notice of appeal passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is Communications, we'll start with Jean.
None.
Okay. Mercy?
I think two weeks ago, the water treatment plant held a tour, and it was very well attended, there was a lot of residents that came out, and so I just want to thank staff for putting that together, and everybody who came out, great fun, so I hope we continue to do that. Also attended the Northland 50th Anniversary on Friday, and that was a great turnout as well. And then I just wanted to say thanks to the staff and everyone who put on the Pirate Fest, and everybody who came out, it was a blast, both Friday and Saturday night, and I, I think we were close in attendance to the Fourth of July throughout the day, so looking forward to next year.
Well, I was going to say the same thing, basically, is that the Northland High School had just a heck of a turnout there on Friday night, you know, I mean, the kids were so excited, and the staff, and they all got their 50-year anniversary shirt, and they were very excited, and it was a great turnout, the mayor did a great job in her talk, and it was just really a nice thing to see the kids so excited, and the school doing so well, you know, especially with all, you know, with the STEM and everything else, so it was wonderful. And for the Pirate Fest, the Northland Community Foundation wants to really thank the city for allowing us to be the servers and, you know, of the alcohol, of the ale, and the rum, and it was a great time being a pirate, and I had no idea we had that many pirates in the city, you know, and maybe that's not a good thing, but we had a good time, and thank you so much for allowing us to be, you know, recipient of some funds there, so thank you.
You have to thank Stephen for fighting all these pirates, right?
For sure, for sure, he did a great job, he and Ashley did a fantastic job, and the rest of the staff as well, so thank you.
Okay, Carol?
Have to add on Pirate Fest and the Northland 50th, they were both great events and well-attended, staff did a great job at our Pirate Fest, and we had a blast, so it was good. I did like, I did want to mention that the Northland Arts and Humanities Foundation received their SCFD award, and it was for $98,280, which was a lot of money, it's a 3% increase over the last years, and it puts them at over $100,000 in grant money, which is just really great, so thanks, big, huge thanks to Michael, who puts that all together. It goes to such good programming that the Arts and Humanities Foundation does, so that was a really great coup for them. And just maybe to go off on the pie bake-off, I know Kate mentioned it, but it is this Friday, $3 if you want to come in and just sample all the pies at the senior center, or you can enter pie to be judged, so it's always fun, good times, that's it.
Okay. I just want to let everybody know that we're going to have a neighborhood meeting this Thursday, October 1st, at the M&amp;O Building, which is the Maintenance and Operations Building on Claude Court, we're going to be discussing the new Justice Center, and so we're inviting the neighborhood to come in and give us their input, and we're going to share a lot of information with you, so I hope everybody can come, any of the Council people that can be there, that'd be great.
What time is that?
It'll be from 6:00 to 7:30, October 1st, which is Thursday, so, and then, just, we're going to, this coming Saturday and Sunday, we're going to have our first annual powwow over at the Stonehocker property, so please, if you've got some time, come on over, I think it's going to be a lot of fun, so, that, and then I was at Northland High School 50th, and it really was a lot of fun, I mean, the kids, I mean, the support from everybody, and they had alumni, I think it was from '68, there were, there's some people that actually rose their hand, seniors, you know, from '68, so it was kind of really amazing, it was really good, nice turnout. Joe? Wayne?
I did the same events, I was at the water treatment plant, staff, they were great with the public and taking them around, those guys are amazing, and they were last year, too, so kudos, hopefully you pass that one on there, was at the Northland High 50th also, and the engineer students, we had two of us around, were amazing, we had a good time with them, and they showed us the engineering section they had there. Pirate Fest, don't get many nights off, probably one of the best nights I had of this year, I'll just kick them back and listen to the music, so I'm kind of looking forward to it next year.
Kyle?
I will be at the meeting on Thursday, and so I'm excited to talk to the residents about that, I also was at the Pirate Fest and had a great time, Gabby liked to hit me with the sword in the swordfighting area, and so I had some bruises on my legs the next day, but it was, it was a blast, so kudos to staff for that, it was, it was great, I thought so.
Great. Kim?
I'll echo, Pirate Fest was really nice, had a lot of fun, and I've had some nice comments back from people who went, so, good job, everyone, and that's it.
Thank you. Joanna?
Nothing to nightmare.
Nothing to nightmare.
Corey?
Just one item, you approved the SGR agreement tonight- Just one item, you approved the SGR agreement tonight, and I know that the city clerk has sent out communication to you about scheduling time with SGR. They're gonna be in town next Monday and Tuesday, so if you haven't gotten with her, please do so to schedule time, and then also, they have asked who else you might want them to meet with while they're in town Monday and Tuesday, if anyone, in terms of creating the profile, and so please reach out either to Joanna or I, with anybody you all think[1712.12]